Chair, I have 7:01. You have a full complement of the visitors that I anticipate being here this evening.
Okay.
The floor is yours.
Okay, so we'll call the order, meeting order at 7:01, and we do real call.
Blake Moore, Huntington Woods.
Adam Wallace, Huntington Woods. Chris Gombiasky, Huntington Woods.
April Seaworth, Huntington Woods.
Jessica Steinhardt, Huntington Woods.
David Schwartz, Huntington Woods.
And we're looking for a approval of the agenda. Motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And an approval of the minutes from January 27th?
I move to approve.
Second, a second, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so agenda item number five, matter of the site plan, special land use for Big D Coffee at 26020 Coolidge.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I don't have anybody here from Big D Coffee for this. My suggestion would be is that we amend the agenda to allow that to go towards the last, like make that item 11 or 12 actually, and swap everything off. Pending that, when that happens, if they're still not here, my recommendation would be to table both items to the next regular schedule.
Okay, and we would need a motion for that.
We'd need a motion to do, you would need a motion to move it to the end, and you would need a motion to do items at the end, should that be the case.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move item five down, down to the end of the, the very end of the agenda, below item 11, public participation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. All right, moving number six, matter of the site plan approval for the new house for 10024. And if you guys want to come up, you can come up to the table and just state your names and...
My name is Amar Mark Youssef, and here's my consultant, my architect, Seth Hart.
Okay, you want to tell us about your plans?
So we have a 1,500 square foot existing house that we plan to remove the existing second floor and build a new second floor on, including interior renovations of the first floor, all new. Everything's new from the walls in, so new interior walls, but exterior to remain, there's new siding.
Hank, was there anything that you can add, or?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Obviously, there's a couple things with this plan. You had plans before you. There is a couple things that you should be aware of. One is, is that because the house has gained over 50% taken down and, uh, that requires two variances, one for a front setback and one for a side setback. The foundation is now anticipated as being removed, which will mean that the front setback and the side setback will be non-conforming. If they had 49%, that would be conforming, but it's not. So they would need a variance. Again, that's not insurmountable, but you have to decide what it is that you feel about the structure and whether you feel that it meets the codes criteria for it. If it does, in your estimation, then you would move to approve subject to zoning board of appeals granting such, such of a variance.
Could I speak on that for a moment? Is that okay?
Yes.
So the both setbacks, the front setback, the existing setback in the zoning ordinance is 25 feet. Our current foundation and existing wall sits at 24.8, so we were building on top of to make a no worse situation happen. The same with the side setback, the current setback on the side that's in question is a five-foot setback and where 4.8 existing foundation. So once again, we're not planning on moving over that, we're just building on top of where the existing wall is.
Right, and just to point out, that still requires a variance, and ZBA still has to do that. Just for clarification, the planning commission can't grant that. They can, they can make a motion to approve subject to, that's a limit of your authority in this case. So, Mr. Chair, based on that, what we have, and how we've gotten that out of there, and there's going to be a couple other things here. The house is proposed again, does require the side yard variance and front yard variance. The lot size is similar, exact to both sides of the houses on either side of the boardman. The house size at 2,318 is what's proposed, is under the maximum house size for what they're allowed, so they're not maxing it out completely. The other houses that exist on the same size of lot is 1,242 for the youth neighbor and 1,721 for the other neighbor. Their house is proposed at two, three, at two stories, the Cape Cod to the shore side is going to be one, is 1.25, and colonial on the other side is two stories. It is a stone siding house is what's proposed. The houses on either side are brick. All of the houses have detached garages. So again, as we have in the last of the site plan, the reason that it is, the reason that it's here is because, one, it's a new single-family dwelling because it's over the 50%, so that brings it into that category. And again, no higher than the existing building, which it is, they're putting a second story on it, and no larger than 50% of the floor area of the existing building, which that would fall into because they're adding on to the second floor. They're adding the second floor on it, and the second floor over the front porch is going to be there as well. So other than that, it's, it's really fairly simple. It's a bundle that's becoming of colonial. So it's whether or not that you feel that it meets all the criteria for that. And again, you could ask Seth if he wants to speak to the windows and any of the elevations or anything like that.
Sorry, Hank, one, sorry, this might be my new, being new to the planning commission, but is this both a new single-family dwelling and an addition?
No, it's a single, it's a new, the definition which threw you is the definite for a new single-family. When you are over, you are constructing over 50%, it is reviewed as a new structure.
Okay.
So that kicked out once in the plan. So the ones that I had highlighted as far as the reasons that it's coming here, I have the reasons that it should be here. It throws you because you put it on the second floor, so you assume the first floor is there and it's entirely, it is not.
Right, but you highlighted, you highlighted a couple things here underneath the addition section.
Yeah.
So I think that's what's throwing you.
Because here, what, uh, the 4.8, which page are you looking at?
I'm on page three of four, their packet, so you've got...
Yeah, those are the reasons that the site plan is required. That's why he has to be here tonight.
But it's not an addition.
But a site plan is required, so it says, "A site plan is to be submitted to the planning commission for approval of new single-family dwellings for purposes in this section. A new single-family dwelling is a dwelling proposed for construction on a vacant lot or an existing dwelling where more than 50% of the existing floor area is being altered as determined by the city building official or his or her design team." So we've determined that this is over 50% being done, therefore, that's one reason right there that it has to go over site plan review. The second that we did here was, and the second item says additions to single-family dwellings, except those additions which meet all of the following, okay? Actually, A should be highlighted to, or to the rear of the existing building, it's not, but that's for additions, okay? This is reviewing as a new, and no larger than 50% of the floor area. That's the one, the 50% is the one that takes it into a new family review. So you're reviewing this like nothing exists there.
Right, so really only reviewing it at under one?
Under one.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Yeah, okay.
I just wanted to point out...
That's what kicked it up to one, right, I see, okay.
Ma'am, follow-up question. How do we get to the meeting of variance if the, if architect is saying, well, we're building on top of the existing, what is already there? How do we then?
Because over 50% of the house is being demolished and redone, so he has to conform to the current regulations, which means he's got to have a minimum of five. He has 4.8. He's got to have 25 in the front, he has 24. This happens from time to time. It doesn't mean that the ZBA has to approve it, it doesn't mean that they will deny it. It just means that you have to consider that when you make your motion, should you decide to favor them with a motion to move forward. But it's, it's, they're setting it out whether it's there or not, once you go past that 50%, the, the thought process is that when you have a non-conforming situation, reconstruction, setbacks, or anything like that, the eventualities is that the conformity, the non-conformity that happens is expected to go away. So realistically, if this were a perfect world, just use to remodel the house completely, put in a new house, do it all conform, wouldn't be an issue. He's chosen to go ahead and save the foundation and build on top of that, which means if that's the case, then he's going to go ahead and, and have to get a variance to do that, if they're not conforming.
Anything else, Hank?
I do not.
Okay.
I'm afraid I have something else.
Okay, anything else to add?
Just to bring it to your attention, the difference on a setback is only four inches. So all, what we're doing is only for four inches.
Actually, less than.
Less than two inches.
It's about two inches.
Two inches.
That's his only more of a...
Right, yeah, that's...
Wrong move.
Just wanted to make sure that we understood why... That was it.
Blake, you have any questions?
You know, to me, this, no, I don't have any questions. To me, this seems pretty straightforward. I mean, they've inherited a condition of non-conformity. The project seems very straightforward, and I wouldn't have an issue kicking this to ZBA.
Yeah.
As it's currently drawn.
Yeah, I agree with that. I can't speak for the ZBA, but I did used to be on it. I mean, I saw issues like this all the time, come from the planning commission, so, um, so yeah, I agree. Any questions?
I have one in agreement.
That's good.
Nope, I agree.
So my question might be for Hank, I guess, is the architectural details?
Yeah.
It's trim boards, wood windows?
Trim boards, wood windows, they're clad, actually, they're wood, but they're clad with vinyl or aluminum, but they're discretion. But they are wood windows.
Then siding other than vinyl?
Correct.
So just because they're using...
They're using a combination of stone and a James Hardy product, which is superior to the vinyl, generally accepted as such.
We consider those architectural details?
We do. The other thing to point out with that, too, is, is that when you, when you have that, the windows which are important, depending on what the materials are, vinyl windows typically can't support as much. So when you have like rails and stiles which are components of the windows, right? You take a look at those, and those are typically like two and a quarter, somewhere in there, and then you can have vinyl windows that'll even go up to like three. So what does that mean? When you're looking at it, it changes the amount of glazing and the appearance of the window from the street. So what they're doing, we actually prefer with that because it'll be more like a conventional house, like the house was always there, and the windows will look more compatible with what's proposed. And what's existing on the block, actually.
And the stone veneer is still a stone product.
It is a stone product. Any other questions?
And, and, so it is wood, just to make, just kind of like, got a couple hours' sleep last night. It is wood on the windows, correct?
So the, they're wood windows interior, and then they're clad in, they'll be clad in vinyl windows?
I don't have any further questions. We'll open up to public participation. Okay, we'll close the public participation, and we'll be looking for a motion.
I would motion to approve subject to, as presented, subject to ZBA variance. Is that stated correctly?
Subject to the variances as required by the zoning board, or as required by the zoning ordinance, probably.
Yes.
A second.
Second? Further discussion? No, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do you want your plans there?
Uh, we have copies.
Okay.
First one linked to the CBA. Paul, we need him, yeah. Save you from printing more of them.
Thank you. Anything that you give, he doesn't have to print. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, Hank.
Moving on to agenda number seven, matter of the site plan approval for the addition at 8411 Lincoln. You guys want to come up and...
Come up and get it on for them.
I'm Ethan Loob. I'm the construction manager of Main Street Design Build.
I'm Brian Ruhan. I'm the architectural designer for Main Street Design Build.
Want to tell us about the project?
We're doing a side entry porch. We're removing the existing porch, rebuilding it with columns and a roof, so it's an easier access coming in and out. And then we're doing a rear screened-in patio roof and with burning fireplace.
Hank, did you have anything else you want to add?
Sure, I just want to go over a couple things here because what they're doing really wouldn't be here except for materials. So the porch that they're having on the side of that, it doesn't affect the lot coverage, they're fine. It doesn't affect the setbacks, they're fine. The rear porch does have materials that are not common to the main house, like not to a predominant material. When I say predominant material, is that the house is 51% brick and the predominant material for the house is brick. That's not what happened here. Regardless of which, this is, does have stone, which is a masonry, you know, which is a natural product. I assume that's a natural...
Yeah, yeah, 100%.
And then they have mostly all screened, glass, whatever they want to put in there. I don't know if those swap out or not, but this is really a very simple thing off the back of the house. The only reason that we flag it is that when there is a different material and neighbors have to look at it through the confirmation. So with that having been said, what they've done here is they've got a bracketed structure that goes to...
Thank you.
Got a bracketed structure with the roof, with the overhang, which is just simply a screened porch. There's nothing else on it that requires that. I mean, for permit, this will take like a very short time to approve. The patio, there are a couple patios like this in Huntington Woods where they have like the fireplace on the inside, and people use those as their cigar bar type of thing, is what we see with them. When you take a look at the plans for this, you can see that it's simply continuing one wall straight. Even though the wall goes towards the back on a little bit of an angle, it still does not break that five-foot barrier. So it's fine in the location that it is, does not require any variances. They have fenestration in all the walls, so there's not an issue with it. If you take a look at the elevations from the back, you can see that there's, like, on the left side elevation, the new one, you can see that there's plenty of fenestration break in there. And you can see that on the new front elevation from where you can see it, you can see from, you can't see it from the other side because it's tucked back in there. And then here, you can see it on the right side elevation. And again, this is one of those things where the house owner lot.
Yep.
So the house fronts on one side and it is platted off the other. So even though this appears to be in a side yard, it's actually technically a front, you know, it's actually a rear yard for this, for this patio. So it's fine and it meets all the criteria. The setback for the rear of the house, which is zoned for our own seat, is preserved, so you have plenty of space between that and the rear of the house. And there's nothing that we have that would be contentious with this from this point. So if you take a look at the plans, if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I'm sure that they are. Main Street built it here before, this is their first rodeo, so...
So with, with, oh, sorry, with the brick, if they were to use a totally different color brick, that would be okay?
Well, okay, so now, now we're getting into a couple things. There's, there's two things with this. One is, the odds on matching the brick exactly are negative. Not only is that negligible, the, the odds on matching the grout lines and the texture of the grout, which is the mortar that goes in between them, would be so realistically, what they're doing is, is a completely different material, which does two things. One is it senses here because you have to approve it, and two, it creates a situation where they have a different thing going on, and it's not as noted. That, that actually will be less noticeable than it would be if you had bad brick and grout match.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So whether it's, whether it's being hard to match or a totally different color, if they were to use brick, they wouldn't be here.
If they were to use brick, they wouldn't be here?
Yeah.
But it might not come out as fair.
No, no, I understand, I understand, I understand that. I understand that, I'm just trying to make sense of like...
That is correct.
I mean, it, to me, it makes more sense to use the stone in that scenario.
Yeah, well, they, they used the stone for the patio, they've highlighted it with the siding, and then they've got the fenestration panels. Sorry, I talked out of it.
No, you're good. You got a question?
Anything else?
Nothing. Question, yeah.
Blake?
I think the, the distinctive exterior material is appropriate. I think the proportions are appropriate to the existing structure. I think it's attractive and absolutely, you know, contiguous and suitable arrangements.
You said it a lot better than me.
And I saw it ducky.
People, did you have anything?
Um, I did not have anything to add.
That's good.
So for clarifications?
Yes.
Newer to this, so the, even though the, the house face is Lincoln?
Yes.
And the address is Lincoln?
Yes.
It's technically a Concord lot, so the porch is in the rear yard?
The porch is in the rear yard, not the side yard.
Okay, thank you.
This is one of the things that when we have our joint planning commission meeting in the CBA, that is, I, I promise you, I'm bringing that up, so...
Okay. Yeah, no, I think that, I concur with the other members of the board, and I think that it looks like a lovely design, and if I remember this house clearly, it's heavily landscaped, which I think would also, you know, help to take away from the, any concerns around, maybe the neighbors would have around something looking a little bit different. Remember, there's lots of trees that surround this house.
I have nothing to add.
I don't have any further questions. Public participation, opening up for public participation? We'll close with public participation. We, looking for a motion to approve or deny. Motion to approve?
Second.
And do we need, do we need to add a little bit of that?
Yeah, could we flush that motion a little bit? Most people, like, maybe something along the lines of move to approve based on the fact that it meets the criteria of our zoning ordinance?
Right.
And general requirements for approval.
Motion to approve with a finding that this meets our zoning requirements and is otherwise in conformity with all applicable guidelines?
Second?
Second.
Jessica? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want your plans?
Thank you. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I still have the special training opportunities on the agenda.
I just want your answer.
I just wanted to make the commission aware that on the 17th, we're going to be having the Zoom blueprint reading class, okay? For some of you, you won't need it, don't need to be there. Some of you are experts, some of you are not. Whatever the case may be, there will be a presentation made by somebody who's been in the building business for going on 50 years now, me.
I was going to say, it's got to be you.
So, yeah, we'll have different things that we'll put up on the board. There's the biggest question that you have. So any questions that you have, really, not so much the biggest, but the questions that you have, it's a good time to ask them and answer them because a lot of times, particularly if you're newer to the board, you don't necessarily understand what the terminology is and what that is. We've been going through all of that. So that'll be helpful. We'll also be inviting the zoning board of appeals to that, as well as the historic district commission. So anybody that deals with the decision-making on a structure will be invited to that. So that, that'll work out well. Again, it'll be on Zoom, even the public will be available, will be able to log on if they want to. There'll be a link, it's on the site for that, so we'll be able to do that. The other thing is, is just another reminder, is that the 10th March is the joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Perfect opportunity if you have something else other than the lot that's platted one way and faces another. Because if that comes back, you'll be the board that would kind of hammer out the linguistics of that, and then you'll send it to the city commission with the recommendation, should that be the case, you know, for what it is. Also, so any other things that you could think of, and I'll say the same thing to the zoning board of appeals, that they, that they see repeatedly, Adam can tell you from his zoning board of appeals experience, that one's a big one. But you do see things like setbacks, different types... But you do see things like setbacks, different types of things that you might see that may want to be rewritten. We keep seeing it all the time, and the zoning board of appeals keeps granting it because it makes sense to do so, then perhaps the planning commission needs to look at a way to incorporate something, some form of relief into our zoning ordinance. At that point in time, the planning commission is a recommending body and they will transit. What'll happen is, is there will be an ordinance that'll be hammered out. You'll actually approve the recommendation of that ordinance to the city commission. The city commission at that point in time will decide whether or not they want to vote in favor of it. If they vote in favor of it, then it will be codified and put into our zoning ordinance as gospel. So having said that, unless anybody else has any questions about training opportunities, I do want to thank those who were able to make it for the first one. I hope it was helpful. Part of the reason that we wanted to use our own city attorneys, you know, the Rosati Schultz crew, is because MAP has one coming out, like a basic zoning training in March. You will have already had two meetings without any training if you didn't go to that. So it's important to get that, so you have some of it under your belt. There's another ZBA training, planning and zoning essentials given by MAP, which is the same thing, only different, which will be in April. Was that April? Yeah. So you'll be able to go to that one as well if you want to. That's an in-person one, and that's at the Oakwood County. So that's going to be out at the Oakwood County building that's off of, what is that, Pontiac Lake Road there? So the executive office building. So you can go to that if you want. When I send the flyer out, which will likely be tomorrow or the next day, let me know you want to go. The city pays all your registration for that, so that we want to make sure that anytime there's a training opportunity and you're available to take advantage of it, we would like you to do so. There's no such thing as too much training, so we appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I had on training opportunities for right now. Yes, sir?
Is March 17th St. Patrick's Day?
It is. Yes.
Just, am I allowed to attend with green beer?
Well, I don't see...
Oh, Zoom.
They'll be having the March...
No, I understand. I'm just thinking, like, we had a hard time with the quorum tonight, like, can we actually...
The Zoom meetings are actually fairly well-attended because people don't have to, and then, you know, with the, with the 17th...
That's just the train.
The 17th not going to be, yeah, the 17th is not going to be a three-hour thing. You know, we're going to look at blueprints for approximately an hour, hour and a half. If you can't make it, you can't make it. If you can, you can. But here's the other thing, too. We'll have it, it'll be recorded. You can look at it at any time over there if you want a refresher, but that's a date that we can make it happen.
Great. I'm just throwing it out there.
Always appreciated, Dean.
I'm not that committed to St. Patrick's. Pretty good at reading plans, so...
There you go.
Well, I, thank you for putting together the, the meeting with our city attorney. I, I found it helpful in refresher as well, so...
Well, the thing that we like about that, too, is that that's the people that have to defend any decisions, if there's any challenges to them. So I think it's important that we understand what their perspective is on this, and you'll find that their perspective doesn't vary very far at all from mine. And I think it's good. We'll have a couple more sessions with Matt along the way, including one which I'm hoping to put together, which is just simply, like, and ask the lawyer, ask your questions. You know, if you've got questions about how things work or something that hasn't been covered in any of those things, that's the time to do it, and he's our expert with that something.
And adding to that, I'll just say, I've never seen anybody that enthusiastic about parliamentary procedures, so that was both strange and interesting. Now you're super into it.
He actually is, he actually teaches classes, and you can tell by his enthusiasm that he enjoys it. We're, we're very fortunate to have him.
Thanks again. Okay, moving on to public participation.
Well, we have to do the ZBA.
Oh, I'm sorry, ZBA, I'm sorry. Take that back. Yep, election of the ZBA liaison.
Wait, can I ask a question first about the joint meeting?
Yes.
For March at the ZBA? So when is the appropriate time for the planning commission to come up with the topics to address with that?
Sometime between now and the meeting.
So do we have to be in agreement as a, as a planning commission about?
No. No, if you've got an idea, throw it out there. This is, this is the opportunity where you, as a planning commissioner, if you see something or you see something that the zoning board of appeals deals with, if you have a question as to how they interpret things, this is why we do this. We do this every year, and it's one of those things that, it just works very, very well for us. It kind of gets everybody on the same page, and then when the ZBA gets something from you, they kind of know what you're thinking. Conversely, if the ZBA sees something all the time, they get to impart that to you so that you can go ahead and you can say, "Well, do we want to have the discussion at the planning commission meeting about something?" The other thing that will happen also at the March planning commission meeting is we will have our priority list up. So the priority list will be after the meeting on the 10th. So some of the things that we get out of the meeting on the 10th will actually be on the March planning commission priority list discussion. We do these things at regular intervals at times of the year, so, but in order to do that, it makes sense to do these things after certain other events occur so that we have a better understanding of what's going on, what we might want to do.
Are there appeals on the ZBA's agenda that night?
There are not. So it's a perfect night to do it.
And as far as giving you subjects, will we just be emailing you if we don't have anything tonight?
You should feel free to email. You should feel free to bring it to the table that night. If you email it, then the only difference is, is that it will be actually on the agenda. If you don't, it doesn't preclude you from bringing something up that, or it doesn't preclude the public from bringing something up, or the public is just, like, meeting some of the other... If there's any concerns or whatever it is, that is just a great time to hash that out. One of the other things that I'm trying to see, and the problem I'm going to have is that I originally wanted Matt Zaleski, our city attorney, there for that meeting. He's unavailable and will be out of town, which is okay because he can still see the Any other questions, huh? Did I totally confuse you, Justin?
Okay, moving on to number 10, election of the ZBA liaison. Last year, Rick, the chair, was the liaison. But if there's anybody that out there would like to... You're also a voting member, is my understanding as well?
You are a voting member.
Of the ZBA as well?
You're a voting member. So it's, anybody that's on the commission, that's on the planning commission, is eligible to take that position. I will tell you that the ZBA does not meet as often as the planning commission, but I can tell you that sometimes when the ZBA does meet, they're loaded up. So it's, it's, it's up to you for anybody that wants to do it, but there is a time requirement in order to do that. You need the second Monday of the month, and the time for that meeting starts at 7:30 and goes until business is completed. The ZBA is a quasi-judicial body, so the challenge from the planning commission is to the ZBA. The challenge from the ZBA is to Oakwood County Circuit Court. That's just how it works. So having said that, you and the zoning board of appeals are both very important bodies to the city of Huntington Woods, so whoever is interested in that position, plan to be busy two Mondays a month. So you need a nomination, or anybody that wants to do it.
Do you want to volunteer? Anybody like to volunteer?
You're eligible, too, Chris.
I understand. I'll, I'll volunteer.
Somebody would have to nominate him.
Yeah, so just looking for a nomination.
I nominate Chris Gumbieski.
Enthusiastically.
Sensing your, your, okay. And do we have a second for the nomination? We have that? Okay, perfect, all right. I'm just thinking about, all right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chair, at this point, rather than have public participation, we should wait till the end for that. You should hear Big B, which still has nobody here, so that you should consider tabling both items from the agenda, from Big B to the next meeting.
I'll make a motion to table the matter of review of the site plan and special land use for Big B copy.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Blake, opposed?
Thank you.
And we'll open up to public participation. Okay, close public participation. At this point, we looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.